A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic that stands one nation, unregotten, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is the meeting of the Lincoln County Commission Regular Session on December 3rd, 2016. All members present, Darryl Baker, Phoebe Harless, Carol France, Kate Matthews. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of Lincoln County Commission that was held on October 20th, 2016?
So moved.
Can we have a motion in second, on favor of I?
Aye.
Okay, we have one person signed in under public comment, Doris. And this is about your conference, right?
Yes, that time of year again. Well, if it didn't before, I want to thank you for the support being going up there this year. The conference was very interesting, we had a few changes. One of the things that we did, and I talked to the other board members at our meeting a few minutes ago, is they had a thing up there called, I lost it again. And this is something that I had suggested to the board that we do after the holidays. And what this is, usually we have a roundtable discussion for all of these solid waste boards to give each other ideas as to how to recycle. Well, this right here, this is something they've come up with, this is what our roundtable discussion was about this year, and this is what they're calling pop art. We had a big black plastic bag of empty cartons, and we had to make a picture out of it with a message, okay? This one says recycle, I didn't know John Daniels was here, recycle, make it with hands, clean and green, but that's what that is. But this we're going to incorporate into the schools, I think they can do. Maureen's table had this one from different things, recycled matters, and they had all these boxes and containers on their table. Now this one was a finished product from that guy there. And this is the Gettysburg Address. Start looking at the top and you can read it. It was going to...
If you still remember it.
So this is what, I had talked to the other board members, and I told them, I said, yeah, we can do this at the school, but instead of all these different things that we had to deal with, let them do, and I saw one up there that was candy bars, all candy bar wrappers. I saw one, I absolutely fell in love with it. The artist rolled up a whole bunch of them, and I thought I'd come home with them, but I can't find them, Maureen can't find them. He had one there that was similar to this, and had different packages in here, had a border, but all along the border, it had a person's face of a different color. I thought, that's really neat. It was just struck out, you know, that recycling is for everybody. But, so we're going to try to incorporate this into the school after the first of the year. I think we're going to go try to talk to them and get them geared up for it, and let them plan for this. And then the gentleman from DEP was there, and I'd like to put one of these on your bulletin board out there about the fashion show up there. But, the, there I go again. The conference was very interesting, and we really liked it. I only have a couple of things here to say, and Larry's not aware of this, okay? In 2008, Helen brought home the West Virginia Volunteer of the Year from the Solid Waste Management Board. And 2013, I brought it home. And at this last conference, I voted for Larry, and he was one of the three runners-up, but another guy got it. Maybe next year we can get him to do it. And I did give him some presents. Larry thought he was getting it there. I paid for the good stuff last. But the one thing about it is, the very last thing they did up there was give away the grand prize. And I won the grand prize. So that means that y'all wouldn't have to pay my way next year, that I'll get a whole expense paid trip up there, so y'all are relieved of that responsibility, so you can add that money to your budget. I would have got y'all one of these, but I can't stop throwing these in my bag. We always get a nice bag or something. And I come here in this, and I've shopped hard and low for these fancy bags down, let me tell you. Well, I'm dropping everything. And there's one more for somebody. Now, you know what these are for? You want to come show them?
Yeah, it's a...
I don't know if I can do it.
You flip that thing around, there you go.
Oh, okay. That's for your cellphone.
Or your computer, or whatever you want to put on it.
Or your computer mouse or something. And this is just to wipe off in front of your cellphone. If you don't want to hold it, that's what that is. We figured it out today. I knew it had to be something, because this had hinges on it, and I couldn't figure it out, and we were at home. And I told Helen, I said, you know, I don't understand what it's for, so he said to play with it, so it's a cellphone or something like that. Let's see.
Yeah.
I'm glad you told us that, Doris.
I'm sorry.
I'm glad you told us how to use that. So, well, I kept looking at it, and I told him, I said, that looks like a little scraper for the windshield, and he kept messing with it, and then it goes down in this like there. And I thought, well, that's neat. But like I say, it was a good conference. Next year, it will be at Pipe King, at like the third weekend in October, and I'll still represent you, but you don't have to pay my way next year. So that saves y'all some money.
That's what we like to hear. Well, thank you, Doris.
Thank you.
Okay, we have nobody else that's signed in, so our next item is discussion of concern and possible action. And we have on here National Coal Heritage Appointment. And I don't think this is really an appointment, the governor is just wanting a story letter, sending in a name of a recommendation. So, I think, are you here to, you're here to talk about it?
Yeah. If you'd like to.
It's okay.
There's this thing called the National Coal Heritage Authority that was established in 2002, and then in January 2015, Lincoln and Kenau were added to it, so it's 14 counties in the southern part of the state. Christie Bailey, who is a person that Kate and I have been on the board with as the executive director, and they would like to rep from Lincoln County, and what this, I haven't met anybody, I'm just the messenger, okay? I know just a little bit about it. What they, they are mandated with working on historic preservation, economic development, tourism projects, enhancing and interpreting the significant values of lands, waters, and structures in the coal heritage area. And currently Ralph Trippett, who lives in the county, has been real active on the Guyanot River, on working on that, and he is somebody that Christie felt, because he's been involved, might be a good person to do this. Let's see, as you say, the county commission recommends a person to the governor. It's a four-year term, expires June 30th. What else? I think those are probably the important kind of things. They meet every other month in either faculty or...
We talked about this the other night at the EDA, and I think Larry even talked to Christie also, when he had kind of brought us to us there, that Ralph's name came up, so...
Some of them we recommend Ralph Trippett to the governor. I'll say it.
Okay, all in favor of I?
Aye.
So we will send out a letter to the governor, Ralph Trippett is on.
Wonderful. I know they appreciate it, and could you carbon the letter? I guess Mary's going to have to do this, right? Carbon it to Christie Bailey, I'll get you an address.
I think I have forms, two per, and I have a, if I email, I think it goes directly to her actually. But I will, yeah, I mean, I'll make sure.
And I just wanted, as I was driving tonight, I heard on the radio that our federal senators were announcing grants and loans to two counties for septic and sewage. Neither of the two counties was Lincoln, but it still made me think that maybe there's some kind of a chance that we could get some money for the Left Fork area. I've talked to West Virginia Housing Authority and Federal USDA, and they just don't have any programs that would be able to help us. I think, I don't know if we're at the end of possible kind of doors that could be opened except for, you know, elected officials calling somebody and saying, talk them on it.
And all those FEMA meetings we've had, from the very beginning of this, they said, when we discussed this public assistance, come out with it, make them a platform on individual, and if they, if we miss somebody, they can amend their application. Do you think that's still a possibility, really going in?
I think, I think some people can't, I think the problem comes just because of the situation of the folks who live there. In order to get individual assistance from FEMA, you have to own the property and have clear title to it. And there's people who live in those houses that are there who don't have clear titles. Some of them are caretakers, some of them are living on property that grandma said, they bought a trailer there, and there's nothing, there's no registered deed in the office.
But they said some were putting in to places that people didn't do.
Because it was a public health kind of issue. It was falling out of the radar.
It's still a public health issue.
It's still a public health issue.
Hey, listen, we have went, we have, this has been exhausting. We, I feel like we have tried, and tried, and tried, and tried, and I just...
How many have got to fly? I mean, there could be, I'm sure there are some people there who would qualify under all these little things under the law, but I also know there's some people who would just, they won't even look at them, who still have systems and still are living in places where the systems were messed up.
I just don't know what the answer is, you know?
I'm not sure either. I mean, any kind of request you can put into elected officials, I think, for help, help especially if it would come to the county to be the administrator.
So this grant, you found on there, did you cite this there, and it wasn't giving a...
It was, it was, all I caught was that our two senators were announcing that there was federal money going to the two counties for improvement in septic and sewage. It was part, some of the money was a loan, some of the money was a grant. Of course, we, we lack a grant.
Yeah. I don't know if those people were there, are in a position to take out a loan, or if they were...
I don't think they would. I can't imagine.
We're, we're still, I have a, the region two request, yeah, but that's, I didn't get that, so that's still potential for it.
Any, any good work that you guys did?
I'll call you, maybe we can get something together, call the state for that. Now, mansions in work, isn't it? But they've been very, they've been very good, the answers, I mean, they've been very good.
We sent out letters, and letters, and letters.
I called, last, I believe before, specifically about septic and sewage, and it was two days later, we didn't get a call. So, I mean, that's how fast they've been returning. And I think it's who you talk to.
I think it is.
You know, there's certain people that you talk to that are not going to, I guess, they're just there to be on the seat.
Right.
But there's certain people, you know, very, they just want to, they're there to help.
Right, I don't know this.
So if you want to...
For it.
Well, I said, it's, you know, it's a luck of the draw sometimes, when you make calls. But, while, you call me tomorrow, and if you have time, and we'll get the plans with that.
Great. Okay.
Rick, it was a $3.5 million loan for Jefferson PSD for a sewer improvement project, and a million dollar loan and an $800,000 grant for Malden PSD for treatment plant. Those were USDA loans, or funds.
Those were the ones I heard.
Yep.
Thank you. Nothing like the media.
Well, they sent me the same press release.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is Region Two, about lower Munderland Water. And there you are, I was looking for Kathy, y'all was going to send.
No, it's me today. My name's Alexis Smith, and I'll be, I guess, your contact now, hopefully. Um, here are some cards.
Are you sending Andy or...
I may. Um, my cards are currently being printed because I've had a...
You have a model?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Because my title recently changed, so I just haven't been carrying these for a while. Um, so for today, I am asking that you sign a few amended documents, the evidentiary materials, just because the Corps withdrew the $30,000 from their budget line, which I think that you were aware that happens?
We knew there was an amendment, but I didn't know what specific one.
Okay, so from my knowledge, which again, this is very fresh for me, the Corps withdrew $30,000 from the line item from their grant, maybe? And the reason they did that is just because it was sitting there for a very long time, so they removed it. From what Kathy and I have talked about, she's very hopeful that they will restore that money once they see the project in construction and moving, and once we prove that we need that. So hopefully that'll be restored, but this is just the, the evidentiary materials for the new budget for that. So you'll have to sign a few places here. We had to redo the checklist, because a few things had to be changed there. And then we had to add the granting department review certification, which just is a thing, so that way you can get money, basically. And it just wasn't done, but it was accepted. But we just, to be safe, we're putting it in there, because it is required. And then also, the disclosure update report had to change because of the withdrawal of the $30,000 from the Corps. So this will kind of be signed.
Should we all, should, you think it's on the right, or do we need to, when do you need these by?
Um, I don't need to have them by today, but I can answer as soon as...
How is this going to affect the overall project?
It shouldn't affect anything, really, because $30,000 is a relatively small amount anyway for the grand scheme, and if we can prove that we need that money for the construction or for other things, they should be able to restore that within the next full school year, from what I'm told. The evidentiary materials, it's just, this will not halt anything, neither will the budget amendment so far, if that's what you're asking.
All right. I move the motion.
Motion to accept the documents as presented, and give you authorization to sign the search.
All in favor of I?
Do you have a cleating? Yeah.
You'll get us copies of that, so...
Did they send us any kind of documentation saying we're going with all this money? Yeah, because we have had any conversations with them, I didn't know if we can do that.
Um, I'm educating myself as quickly as possible on this, but whatever questions you will have that I can't answer now, I will do my best, go out of my way to...
I was just wondering if there was some way to averden it, you know, whether we should have known that we already received funding from the other source. I didn't know if they'd been kept up to par or...
Honestly, I think that it was just, they needed it because it was, it's been in progress for a while, and that could be because of the other funding sources going so slow. I've been with Region Two for almost a year, but I've never worked in this role over this project, so I can't, I can't...
You got your motion last meeting, didn't you?
Yeah. But, so, as far as I'm told, it's very hopeful that you'll get the $30,000 back, because again, $30,000 is a lot of money when it's just being you, but in the grand scheme of things, it's just a drop in the bucket. So if we can provide good justification that we do get back, the Corps should be able to put that back, should be, as far as I know, though, that I can...
Yeah, I was just wondering, you know, if we had kept in the prize, the rapid funding scenario at that point, that made it this long, it's not even...
Yes, I am.
They might have followed it, too, $28,000 or whatever, you know what I mean? So, anyway, as long as you, you guys follow up on it, trying to get back, we're going to do the process.
Yeah, we'll, we'll chase it.
Okay, good.
I don't have to sign. No, just you. And this is the budget amendment that shows where it was moved.
Do you get copies of this back once they done?
Yeah, Mike or Andy, whoever used to email it to me, but now I know it's maybe a lot, you may just need to make me copy and mail it.
Yeah, I can mail it or email it to you, that's fine, I can scan it, whichever.
That's our email, usually my best.
Then, yes, I can do that, I'll have it to you as soon as I can.
Can I ask one question? When did that, when did they withdraw the $30,000?
Um... I, well, I've been, I was an intern for a while, and then I was promoted to project assistant, and I just was yesterday...
The only reason I asked, the last meeting Kathy wanted me to get this signed, but it wasn't on the agenda, because she said there were no changes. She wanted me to sign it, and I said no, until we got it in. We had to put it on, but now there's a 30, so I didn't know when that...
Okay.
What we'll do is we'll continue to ask her when she comes up with her, we'll wrap it back.
I can find out exactly when that was, and I can find the documents for that, and then send it to you.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I'll chase it down as far as I can.
Okay, do we need another motion for that?
It's under...
It's under... It's at the minimum right now. Well, nice to meet you, and I have things...
Oh, I have one, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
And then finally, I come with a drawdown request. The total amount is $15,112.85, with $7,384.20 going to us for admin fees. We have $7,046.15 going to Griffithland Associates for accounting. And finally, we have $682.50 going to Flora Law Offices for legal services. So this is it, and we do sign.
What's the number on the drawdown?
For small cities.
Motion approved, you got an request, and the key, and the project, and give you authorization to sign it.
And I believe all of you have signed. Also, with progress, I do know that land acquisition wise, we're pretty far along, I believe 80% was what I was told on that one. So from there, we'll proceed. I'm getting updates upon the status of the project and where we are, and with, when that comes to me, I'll get it to you. So if you have any questions at all, just contact me.
I'm going to head and put West Virginia extension lease agreement on here on Tuesday before we posted the agenda, just in case, but we've got that worked out, so we don't need to have any discussion in our flat. So unfinished business, we didn't have any new business. Did you want to change the whole word, any questions?
Were you going to... This, we can use, can we add pending prosecutor?
Okay, we had a motion that we had put on here, and it was brought to our attention a little bit ago, there was some questions about it. So we're getting kind of conflicting opinions. So I'm going to ask that we approve it as it is listed on the agenda, pending review from our prosecutor.
You talking to the ed, this man?
Yes, on the...
I'd be happy to discuss our rationale, unless you don't want to move on to other matters, and that's what you're going to be doing anyway, but we wouldn't...
This is the thing, I mean, we're going to approve it, we'll let him look at it, and then if he's pending his approval, if he has a question about it, then we'll come back. But we really can't talk much about it, because it's probably going to come before us in a hearing, do you think? I mean, we don't want to...
Normally, there's, there's two things at hand in this, and I'll be very brief. When anticipating a document that we thought would be presented, we put in a notice of contest, and our rationale is under the statute that if you're fortunate enough to act before will's admitted probate, it shifts the burden with the notice of contest to one who would want to admit it, to prove that it's good, instead of filing it and you have to go to cert court to prove that it's bad. Now, having done that, then if there is a will contest, and now this will's been brought in, the death certificate's here now from Mr. Atkins, if there is a will contest in a way, I'd assume you'd probably farm that out to one of your fiduciary commissioners to actually hear the litigations, if a good will is a bad will. And then while this is all pending, nobody's minding the store on the estate, and if there is a will contest pending, that's why we ask that the son of Mr. Atkins be appointed as curator. We understand you'd have to have a bond posted. I prepared an order, if you're inclined to do that, that would, that would basically say, you're appointed curator, we have a minimum bond until we know how much is in the estate bond, whatever you, in your discretion might be appropriate, I would suggest a more than $10,000 bond, until we know what's in the estate. And number two is to harmonize out to fiduciary commissioner for hearings on the will contest, if you're inclined to do that. If that's what I anticipated you might do, and I prepared an order that effect, if you want to consider it.
Well, see, the problem is, we didn't get the will and the death certificate until yesterday, so it's not on this agenda. Do you see what I mean? So we've got this on here to approve it, and we'll say pending his review. And then the next agenda, we will have a will, and I will be honest, I'm new to the commission, this curator is new to me, I don't, this is the first time, I don't have, I don't think Darryl's even...
It's new to me, too.
It's been on books a long time, and basically, if you've got a will contest going, there's nobody minding the store, the statute I quoted's been for a long time, says you can appoint basically a temporary person over the estate, and that's called curator.
But the will itself names someone else as administrated by that?
The will does name an executor, but see, the whole point is, is the will valid or not valid? In this case, either way, my client is named as a principal party in the will, as well as the lady who's offering that. He's also an heir if the will fails, and he's a very competent gentleman to be a curator in the meantime, he would have to post bond to have this position. I don't know how long we're going to go, there's some issues about a car and some personal properties that are going unattended as long as nobody's at the helm of the estate. Now, I'm not preaching, I'm just saying, this is why we came to you in a responsible fashion, to say, if there's a will contest going on, that's one of the reasons why the statute says you can have a curator. So we came in to see if they were inclined to do that. So when you say, we're going to grant the motion, are you going to appoint, allow him to be appointed curator and have a bond posted?
Well, once the prosecutor tells us this is appropriate, the right thing to do.
We found out there was a little bit of misunderstanding, maybe, I don't know if that's the word, but right before the meeting, we went upstairs to get him to say if he would come down and be here at the meeting with us, and he had, he wasn't here. So if he was here, and could tell us, that it's a, you know, we just can't, yeah, he'll, he can look at it tomorrow.
Some folks have a problem, because they'll look at a will...
Some folks have a problem because they'll look at a will and they'll say, mine is a pretty will, and this certainly is a nice looking will, but you can have a very nice looking will and have a person not mentally competent do the will. You can have a will that's nice looking and is failed because the person was under undue influence. So simply because you have this doesn't mean it's necessarily gonna pan out to be a valid will and, and what have you, but that's our point. I think the advice came down with what looks like a fine will, so we admitted to probate, but the problem is, the people contesting then have to go to circuit court, they bear a very heavy burden to prove to show that it's bad. That's why we filed this contest now, because it shifts the burden, and, and that's just an option we have to make her prove that it's good because it saves us a lot of expense by doing it this way. If I may give you the blank copy of the order I prepared in case the prosecutor gives.
Yeah, would you do that? And we can give that to him tomorrow. I'm gonna be honest, this is.
Well, you know, whenever I bring a probate matter to county commission, I get, you hear that collective groan, but I'm sorry, you're still left with some jurisdiction over states. That would be for you all to approve and would provide for the setting of the minimum bond, whatever you all think is appropriate, ten thousand, five thousand, of course, if an appraisement comes in and it's a higher figure, we'd have to post a higher bond, and we understand for being curator. And then for the will contest, it would refer it out to one of your fiduciary commissioners. Now, one of your fiduciary commissioners, I think maybe Mr. Salmons or Salomons, and if he is, he, he was, he drafted this will.
He, we don't, he's going to be.
Family law judge?
Yeah, so.
Well, I didn't know who it would be, but that leaves you, you can pin it and do that would be if they give you the green light to do that. We hope you do, because like I said, the store's not being minded right now in the estate. We'd like to see if a, a young Mr. Atkins can be appointed.
Okay, like I said, we'll do it this way, we'll give all this stuff to him tomorrow to look at, if he thinks it's fine, then.
When might we hear what the final decision would be? Your next meeting or within days unofficially, or what might?
Well, I, I think this motion would be in, in force once he says it's a proper motion, you know, and, and I understand you're shifting the burden to prove, but I don't know, we sitting here as a commission should do that. You know what I'm saying, we don't have the other party here, we don't have their legal representation to send us here to give us their side, and we're gonna, you know, we, when we have hearings, at least we have the last sixteen years I've been here, we've had our prosecutor here with the, the lawyers involved in the case, so he could, he could advise us as we make decisions, so that we.
Well, and if you all want to say, well, you're gonna sit down in the next meeting to, and for me to notice the other side, that's fine. I, I saw this as setting this thing up because it was obviously a contest pending, that you would maybe farm the whole thing out for fiduciary commissioner to hear. And have to hear this.
Well, and that may very well be what prosecutor tells us we should do, you know, and, and I'm, you know, and if, as long as, I just don't wanna, you know, these are legal matters and I'm not up to date on legal matters, and I know that's your business. But I do know in the past, when we've had any kind of meetings, we've always had both sides here. So they could counter anything that, their, their lawyers could counter anything that might be said, because we, we always wanted, when we've had our hearings before, we've had both sides here, so we could hear both arguments at the same time. And, and that way we can make a decision based upon what information was brought in for us at that year.
If you want me to notice this for an upcoming agenda, whatever you all call and tell me to do, we'll do it, we'd just like to get after it as soon as we can.
Okay, do you want us to set this with five thousand?
I mean, some minimum bond would what, what we would ask for, because like I said, he's, we're on the outside looking in, and frankly, everybody else is, cause nobody's over the estate right now, so. Uh, if we find out there's more, we post more, we had asked for something minimum like five thousand to start with. And if more turns up, we'll have to bond more. Uh, that's, if he's appointed curator, you can fill in that amount, so.
Okay, that's what.
And, and this doesn't.
Yeah, so we're.
Let me mention, this doesn't cut off any hearings or anything, that the whole hearing about the will itself would still go on perhaps in front of the fiduciary commissioner. I doubted you all really wanted to hear that litigation in front of you all, you've got that prerogative, you don't have to farm it out if you don't have to.
Yeah, we have before, but it seems to work better when we do have fiduciary commissioner up there.
I thought if you were just itching to hear that and broaden your eyes and do that, how you feel like. Uh, so I will simply informally get a call from somebody or by which one do you?
What we'll do is, uh, if, we'll have Mary, our assistant, give you a call quick, she hears from the prosecutor, as far as what direction he wants us to take.
Okay, and Ms. Mary, do you have my phone number, ma'am?
Um, I do not, but I'm sure Cara in Daryl's office does, but I can get it.
Cara, she's been a great help, um, three oh four, three oh two, twenty twenty.
Three oh four, three.
Oh two.
Oh two. Twenty twenty.
Okay.
I keep waiting for enough time for Chris to offer me my books, whether.
You should, yes.
Then, then we will be excused until we hear from.
We'll have, well, Mary will take this up to him Thursday in the morning and then.
If you decide to have a meeting where the people can come in on just this decision on what to do from this point on, or entering that order, when would be your next meeting that you have?
The seventeenth, yeah, the seventeenth.
Seventeenth this month?
And we'll, um, accept the will as, you know, we have to.
And hopefully the prosecutor say we can just go and do what you guys want.
Please understand, if you say accept the will, I don't, obviously, you're supposed to produce it and file it. But submitting it to probate and saying that is the will, that changes everything, I'd have to go get rid of prohibition or seek a writ of prohibition from Judge Hope or something, so. Obviously, she's got a duty to put down on the table, but, but this is, our whole fight is about whether it should be admitted to probate.
Right, for sure, they accepted it yesterday. But I guess, I mean, they, you accepted it as it was presented and filed and, or.
Filed it and, and let them know when the meeting was, to accept it.
You've all accepted.
You, you guys were accepted.
On the seventeenth, yeah.
I would just plead with everybody in the clerk's office not to officially admit it to probate until we fully flesh this out, that's our whole point in this, okay?
Admitting it to probate is just to prove that it's not, uh, not be appointed, there won't be an appointment, that's what you're talking about.
I'm talking about accepting the will, so when you, when you make that appointment, you're recognizing the appointment under the will, you're admitting it.
Appointed, right.
But submitting it just to be.
But submitting it for us to take it, that is just, uh, saying it's probatable, and that's just for some, for somebody else to decide, not, not to appoint, but to probate.
It, well, it's just being left with you, basically in your custody, it's not admitting it to probate until there's an official order or action on it.
That, that would be a point, and a point.
See, there's the ex parte probate, but anybody walking in, if there's no controversy, puts it down, and yes, it could go right in slick as you please. But because we have the notice of contest, we're asking that it not be admitted to probate until we flesh this out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you much.
I think we're a little bit clearer now, so we will proceed. Okay, we have to make a motion to. Okay.
You just leave that.
Okay.
Okay, so we, I need a motion to approve the new business, um, with the amendment about, um.
Pending prosecutor.
Right, thank you. Okay, all in favor, aye, aye. Okay, the new business, it's been approved. Do you have anything else that you want to talk about? Mary, do you have a copy of this, can I give you? All right, if we don't have anything else, then I need a motion to adjourn until our next meeting on, oh, yes, morning, thank you. I have some notes here, hold on, let me see if I have anything. Oh, I do wanna mention this, that we did not receive the courthouse facilities improvement grant again. We got a letter yesterday about that, and we, um, got one bid for the electrical work over to the annex from Seneca um, for twenty-four thousand dollars, twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. That was the only person that did it. So, we got that in yesterday, all that in yesterday, so we didn't have a chance to put it on here, but I wanted to look it up.
Did, um, you, you got the bid already there? These have a description of what it provided for that?
No, he said, yeah, he said he provided that, uh, if he was awarded.
What was he saying that he?
He did, he gave, he gave two, he said twenty, twenty-four thousand nine hundred for the, for the electrical, and five thousand five hundred if you put in all the outlets for the voter machines. That's the only two specifics that he gave, he said he'd give more if he was awarded the bid.
Well, I'll tell you what, we really can't get into too much more than that, so we'll put it on the next agenda to discuss it and figure out what to do with it.
When's the, when's the canv- canvas of the election?
Uh, November fourteenth at ten P M.
Is that the moment of the Tuesday?
Monday.
Okay, so our next meeting is on seventeen at ten A M. So I have a motion to adjourn for a second, all in favor, aye. I will adjourn until the seventeenth.